All right, we'll call the meeting already, 6 o'clock, 12:00 tonight. Knock it up, watch your phone. We'll call the, uh, Westmore City Council Meeting, the order. April 20th, 6:00 out of the 23rd, 6 o'clock. First out of this, call the, uh, call the order, then you can vote. You got Pastor Greg Dunne, Dunne, did you go ahead and do, do yours?
You ready for me?
Yes.
Oh, right.
Of course.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, it's good to, uh, uh, good to be able to just stand in, uh, in office devotion. I'm just gonna pray, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be too long, but, um, but I do want to, as I was thinking about this, I was thinking about how, uh, God in His Word says, uh, tells us that He sets up governments, uh, that His hand is in, uh, everything that's happening in this council meeting and in council meetings all over, uh, all over the country. Uh, but I wanted to read Psalm 24, which has been on my heart. We're about to do a youth guide encounter, and Psalm 24 is something that we, uh, that fits the theme of our encounter this weekend. But I want to read verses 1 and 2, Psalm 24, says, "The earth and everything in it, the world and all its inhabitants belong to the Lord, for He has laid its foundation on the seas and established it on rivers." So I just want to pray tonight, just ask God's blessing on this, knowing that He is our, um, that He is in control. So, Father God, we just thank You. Jesus, we just glorify You tonight, where we just lift You up into this place, Lord God, in this city, uh, this little town, Lord God, uh, in this world that You made. Lord, I know that Your hand is on it, God, Your hand is on these council members, Your hand is, uh, right here amongst us, Lord God, even though we're a small town. God, we know that You see everything and You know everything, Lord God. God, we thank You for Your sovereignty, we thank You, Lord God, that You are right in the midst, that You're a God that's not far away, that You're a God that is close to us, Lord. And God, tonight, we ask Your favor, we ask Your blessings on our town, we ask, Lord God, that You would just touch, Lord God, in a mighty way, uh, that this meeting, Lord God, would, uh, uh, bring the fruit, God, that You were desirable for our town. God, we love You, we thank You, God. It's in Your precious holy name, Jesus, that we pray all of these things, and we give You honor and grace, and we worship. Amen.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Walk then, take caps off, and pray, pray allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Uh, Mr. Kellner, would you do the roll call, please?
Staples?
Here.
Correct. Uh, okay. Borders?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Judge.
All right. Alex is gonna be 30 minutes late, uh, he will be here, so we have a form. Uh, anybody wish to speak to the agenda? If you want to speak to the agenda, now's the time to do it. You want to speak? You won't be able to speak no more until, unless you speak now.
Oh, no, I just, uh, I've gone over the bell, I just didn't know when that was gonna come.
That, we're gonna, we're gonna do that tonight, but if you want to speak to it, you have to speak, this is a different setting than a work study. If you want to speak to that item, the only item that you, that you, you speak to, your item on the agenda. We won't be able to talk back, they won't be able to ask no questions till later on, till we get a motion, so, but we won't be asking no questions then. Uh, but you go ahead, if you want to make yours, if you want to make a...
Oh, well, um, okay.
I'll come up there to the podium.
Oh, we all need to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Nice to meet you, to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made to adopt the agenda, thank you, she should have seconded. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we go ahead and do the call.
All right, well, I do want to apologize for missing the last one. It came, things are really hard to get in my house with just me and my dad, who have a stroke, and being admitted back on ICU, therapy, and it just, I was a day late, but, so I do apologize to everyone, uh, on my behalf of that, I was just scattered, right? And then the other thing I just want to mention is that upon, uh, pain, uh, the second water bill after this incident, um, I guess apparently a couple people had come out and saw some leftover material in my yard from when I was digging holes, trying to find the spot. They were under the impression that I made a repair. I just want you all to know that I haven't touched one thing since the last time we were here. I haven't hired anybody, I haven't went out, I haven't done nothing. Um, and then again, like that, the last two bills have been 53 bucks again, it's back to normal, so hopefully when we discuss it, we can figure out that you guys found out what's going on, something, that from us...
All right, thank you. All right. Next items, minutes for March meeting.
We adopted the minutes from March at 16, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Brown and seconded by Councilman Boarders. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. March 2023 financial statement. We don't have a chance to look at it.
I think a motion that we approve the March 2023 financial statement as is?
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Brown, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Calvert. All the favors stick by, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, old business. Ordinance, uh, second reading on ordinance 032023-1, budget amendment for garbage truck repairs.
Motion to approve ordinance, uh, 032023-1.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Calvert, seconded by Councilman Staples. Any discussion? I talked to, uh, JR just a few minutes ago, and the garbage truck is not ready. They, uh, like one seal, and it'll take about three more hours of work to put that one seal on, and then it'll be ready, so. All right, any more discussion? Mr. Kellner, call the roll, please.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second, uh, item of old business is the, uh, ordinance 032023, sewer plant change order engineering phase.
Motion to approve ordinance 032023-2 for the sewer plant change order for engineering phase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Alderman Calvert, seconded by Alderman Boarders. Any discussion? I would say no, this is the first reading on this ordinance, right?
This is the second reading.
If there's a debate.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see. This is the second reading. There is no discussion, uh, call roll, Mr. Kellner.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's the end of the old business. New business, uh... Then if y'all don't mind, I may skip around here, give Alex a little time to get here on some of this, some of this, so, uh, let's skip down to the canine export, the canine dog, let's skip down to that, what y'all's wishes to do there.
About we discussed that, uh, one of the old officers that handled him would like the dog as a pet.
We're just making, we're just making...
Like that, like that motion.
A motion that we allow that officer to, uh, that dog as a pet as long as we have leave from our legal to make sure that the city is not liable for any...
Did you get that motion?
Allow Justin Dardoff to, to...
Take the dog as a pet?
Adopt directional... ...as a pet.
And would you add in there, uh, like in police service?
Yes. Not... ...back to police service.
And relieve the city of all responsibility.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, uh, motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
The discussion, I think, that we were gonna have, I can't remember if we, um, if our attorney was gonna look over a contract, did he get a chance? Did we, did we email him about that? He showed...
I, I talked to Mr. Braden today about this, and he said he would draw the draft.
Okay.
Uh, he's seen these situations before, Florida's, uh, with dogs, police horses, and he said he would draw the, uh, a draft for him to sign.
Or none, I guess it would be like a non, a non-hold fault.
Yeah.
Right.
Agreement. A lot of...
Relieving us from all the liability and, uh, stating in there that the dog, I go back into police service, they remain a pet.
I'll make sure that's included. And when does he want to do this, chief? When does he want to take the dog?
He's, he's ready anytime.
Okay.
Right now, Officer Wyans still hasn't taken care of it, so.
Okay.
And we're paying, right now, the city is paying Officer Wyans four hour per week kennel time, so as soon as that transition is made, then that'll, that'll save a little bit of...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Okay.
All right, probably to, uh, get that dog to, to as quick as possible, so. Any more discussion? Mr. Kellner, call roll, please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did everybody get a chance to, uh, go over the paving bid from the county? Did everybody sign that? So I'm gonna go down to that, paving bid, total, uh, county is, uh, give us a bid on some paving, uh...
That was in the discussion in the package, wasn't it?
Yes. I don't think there was anything in the package.
Uh, we were looking at it. It's not really a test. The cost, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the paving for the scheduled road, for the roads that are in question.
Now second.
Okay, motion's been made to, to approve that the county, Southern County Highway parking through the paving of roads that he bid, and also second. Any discussion?
Uh, you were saying he could start the work probably in June?
Probably, probably in June, if not before. And I know they're up in this area right now doing some paving, and he would like to get it before, and some of these roads connect to a county road, and he's gonna pave the whole road while he's here, county force, so he's moving to it very quick. Now, there was a section of road that I didn't have him to measure, but, uh, I just forgot to tell him it's a city lake road, and look, about two tenths of a mile outside, it goes around two hours, so I'm gonna have him to, to add that to it when he gets, when he gets up here. You, uh...
I said, I think you're working on intercarriage route right now, and that's just right, right across from...
Now, couldn't you...
Oh, couldn't drive, so...
All right, any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we'll go right down and do the, uh, the ordinance to amend the budget, year end budget, and add, add height to it. We'll get that, that... Let's see if you're somewhere. So y'all, over, over the limit, pledge a amendment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, um, pass ordinance 042023-2, I believe it'll be first reading, um, for the budget amendment for year end and scheduled paving.
Now a second.
Okay, motion's been made, second, pass on first reading, the pledge of amendment. Any discussion? I would like to tell Keisha, go ahead and add another $250,000 to the payment to cover, hopefully, his bid was 424,000, so I can make it over to add 250.
We initially had 250.
Yeah, we initially had 250, so I can make it, the paving, 500,000, so hopefully that'll cover a little extra, I think it will. Any more discussion? Here in the call roll, please.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Oh, we might get done before Alex gets here. The, uh, beer permit, at, what's, what we're gonna do is the resolution for, uh, for the, THDA amount going from 500,000 to 700,000. The agenda says that we're amending it, but this is a new resolution number, so we're not amending it, we're just passing a resolution, and that will override the last resolution that we, that we had. Entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve resolution R042023-1.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, passed this resolution. Any discussion, and second, any discussion?
Uh, we've already approved this, we're just, uh, the amount went up.
The amount went up, yes.
Just approving the additional amount.
Yep. Here in the call roll, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
I did talk to Amanda today, she feels very comfortable about this, about this, um, about this, um, grant. Uh, she wants to come up one day next week and meet her ride around and look at some houses that probably will qualify, but we got some that are probably qualified, completely tear down, and rebuild.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great thing, it's kind of all good potential.
And the, uh, to, the, uh, beer permit for Family Dollar? Some material in here.
No, I think that was, uh, like...
They sent everyone an email, um, but the paperwork was provided, that was studied. They submitted their paperwork and their fees and everything, they just need a license to sell from the store.
Okay. Motion to approve the beer permit for Family Dollar and Dollar Tree?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the, uh, beer permit, selling beer at Family Dollar and Dollar Tree. Any discussion? Did, uh, did background checks, did all that go through?
Yes.
Okay, so everything, everything was good? Here in the call roll, Kellner, Mr. Kellner.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
No.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Vote three, three in favor, one against. Motion carries. And, uh, we'll go ahead and do the mayor's mileage for first quarter.
I'd make a motion that we approve the mayor's mileage for first quarter 2023.
Motion's been made to approve my mileage for first quarter 2023, I have a second.
A second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Any questions about it?
Sir? I'd like to see you go on about your meetings. Yeah. I mean, if you're going to the Greater Nashville, the Southern County, uh, meeting with the mayor, those are all good things.
Yep, they're, they're interesting meetings.
It keeps you, the, plus informed, what's going on in the county.
I just wish they'd moved that Greater Nashville Regional Council meeting to us more than Nashville.
Didn't get reimbursed for the mileage?
Yeah, we paid our mileage. All right, any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, you just, you got the whole... Yeah, I can wait to do that, and this is, I was gonna hold off till, um, Alex got here, but this is first reading, so it won't matter. We'll go ahead and do the ordinance, the resoning ordinance for 807 Park Street.
Uh, motion to approve ordinance 042023-1 for the resoning of 807 Park Street, C2 to R2, first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, to, uh, pass on the first reading, ordinance 042031. This is resoning from, uh, C2 to R2, 807 Park Street, that's the building back here that, uh, used to be Forrester Pest Control. Any discussion?
I just, clarification for me, I haven't got a chance, I didn't ask at the work stage, but are they gonna, is this the potential for going back to a residential building? For a dwelling, or is he gonna, or they will continue the business in there, or what are they doing?
No, the business is sold to, uh, Forrester Pest Control sold theirs to, uh, to another pest control company, and, uh, it's going, it's gonna be residential, be on more business there. In my opinion, they should have never been sold, commercial begin with, from where it's located.
Well, I've been realizing that the business isn't supposed to run out of residential anyway, in theory, in its own...
We're wrong even right now, we're wrong one or two.
Yeah. So it is going to residential, and it more than likely be rental property. Any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Motion carries, next. We're, uh, about five minutes from Alderman Jones being here, and I'd like for him to be here on these next two items on the agenda. Is it okay with everybody, we just take a break until Alex gets here? But I'd like, I'd like him to be in on these. So we just, uh, take a little recess for a few minutes.
All right, Mr.?
All right, so we went through most of the, and one of the things I know that you might have been concerned, it's just the first reading, so...
Right away, you hear shit.
Yeah. And, uh, so, next, next item of business is the Baldwin Water Leak. We've discussed this, and discussed this, so everybody got a, want to make a motion. Y'all might have some more questions, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to suspend the rules on these next two items, and, uh...
I'd like to motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of discussion.
A second.
All right. Motion's been made to suspend the rules, and seconded, for, uh, the next two items on the agenda, which is the Baldwin Water Leak and the WWTP Order Change. Any discussion?
Which one do you want to start with?
Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, no, no discussion.
All right, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Baldwin, he wants to get back, back to the house, so, uh, y'all got the floor.
We can, we can discuss these, we can discuss if Mr. Baldwin corrected this in his format?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, can you, uh, I know we've been talking about this for a while, and, uh, I certainly would love to be able to help you, and, uh, I just need to hear again what you've already explained, and I appreciate that, that you have done it, and I know there's a roughly, how, how much, is it 6,000 or 4,000, what was the total?
485,000 gallons.
Well, I was asking for the dollar amount, for the...
The bill amounts, or is two bills, the bill amounts together are 5,577 dollars, and then each of them had, like, one had 305 dollars lengthy, and one had 205 dollars lengthy.
So, so total, we're talking about 5577, right?
Yeah, 'cause I can wipe this...
What, what, uh, what, Mr. Baldwin knows the city was for. So, with that said, you're, you're claiming that there's never been a repair at your property?
No, sir.
And you believe that the reason for such volume over the course of whatever amount of time it was, was...
I believe if, if, I don't even know.
No, go ahead, I, I know where I'm going with this.
I believe it was within a two-week period from when I paid the bill to when they came up to read it, and, but I was unaware, and me and my dad had left, came home, and the water was off, and then I called to ask, hey, are you guys doing repairs? My water's off, and they said, give me your address, and I told them, I said, oh, you got a huge leak, we had someone come out and shut it up, and that's kind of where I'm like, what, huh, what should we be talking about? And at that point, that was like 400 and some thou, 485, and I'm like, what? And then that's basically where we're at, but, no, I have never, since, since it was put in from the very beginning, no, we've never had any, any, well, I can't say that we ever had any issues, but no, there was no repairs ever done, no one's ever come out, never have. I mean, there was times where it did get kind of high, and I had also questioned it down at City Hall for like 43,000 gallons, and I'm just like, and when I went to look it up online, that's four full-size under around pools, and I'm like, I have no wet spots, no, there's no trace of water, and, but this, again, I still paid it, I was like, okay, fine, I'll pay, so we paid, three times we've done that, and then now this one is just, like, I was here last time, I had no explanation, being a, a journeyman plumber, I had, I could not figure it out, and that's when I came in here, and we all said, hey, let's put our ass together, and when we figure it out, and me, trust me, it's still something that goes through my head, it's really not on the high, high part of the list right now with my dad having a stroke, and I'm basically taking care of him night and day, but it still definitely needs to get rectified, because I can't explain, again, if it's a few thousand gallons, I get it, I understand it, maybe, yeah, but the terrain and the, how it is here, I get exactly where you got, you kind of found the water, but 500,000 gallons, I would have saw it. Now, mind you, I know some of you guys have been at my house, I just don't remember who, so I gotta apologize, but where that meter sits, I found that line, and I found the connection, and from there, there's a hose pit, and that's just straight down my yard, and then turns right in the back of my house. If there was a leak somewhere, 'cause that's the only line going from that meter, going through my yard, down next to my house, round my back, and inside... If there was a leak somewhere, 'cause that's the only line going from that meter, going through my yard, down next to my house, round my back, and inside my house, I would have saw some, it, I would have saw if I went to the house. I, anybody would have saw it. It's not there. And I don't know for the life of me how, again, process of elimination, there's nothing going on with the mains that you guys know of. If that's not it, well, then you're talking about my house. So you're talking about main to meter, nothing's happening there. But then you got the meter, and then from that, then that turns into my responsibility from meter to house. I've got nothing, so process of elimination, it keeps going back to the meter. I know the meter's been replaced. Hey, I'm not saying that I haven't gotten brand new things, and it's gone bad. I don't know where the meters are coming from, but that's the only thing that I can keep going back to, is process of elimination from main to my house. The only thing in it is meter.
And we did, Aaron did have the meter tested?
Right, yeah.
And y'all have heard the results of that, right, what I did?
Yeah, it was, like, a two percent.
And are you talking the one that's in there rate, the rate of the second?
No, the one that they took, the one that they took out.
Correct.
Had a two percent. It was reading two percent higher than actual usage. So, two gallons on a hundred.
I had no, yeah. Well, again, as far as excess, excess, as far as the volume of it with two people, there's, I, I, you can't go through five hundred thousand gallon water two weeks. It not comes somewhere, somewhere, somehow. But that's me personally. You guys had the city come out, you may have brought other people out. If you got, if we're still at, man, we have no idea what's going on. We don't know. Again, all I can say is that from then, I've gotten two other water bills, and they're the minimum that we always use the plan from, fifty-three bucks. No more than sixty. And those have been the last two bills, because I go in and pay them.
That was with the new meters, with the new.
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if the new, the old meter, um, I get confused, I'm sorry, um, was from prior, but the one that was showing the five hundred thousand, that's a meter you guys took out and replaced?
Right.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then that really leads me back to, it was the meter. Because if you guys put a new meter in, it's holding, and I'm only paying fifty-three dollars a month.
But the meter wasn't showing a discrepancy. They're very simple. It's a turbine meter. If there's a fault going through it, it didn't don't read.
I get it.
Okay.
Trust me, I, I understand, I get it. But my point, where that's at, I would see it. Five hundred thousand gallons of water.
And the meter's still, the old meter was still in there for a little bit of time after whatever stopped turning, because it wasn't.
Right.
It wasn't like it was turning continuously. They switched the meter and it stopped turning. No, it, it had stopped.
They shut the water off, and then when we turned the water back on, the meter was not spinning out of control.
Logan, you're, you, you deal with plumbing or water and sewer projects left and right all the time. Have you ever seen a me, a meter go haywire, and then work is functioning, or work is normal?
No, it doesn't seem very reasonable. I, I'm sitting here thinking with you guys about, as you're talking about marrying options, I'm not seeing anything obvious as the couple.
Have you ever seen a meter register as if water's going through, but it not?
Have you ever seen a meter that water's going through it, and it's spinning way faster than what it should? That, that the needle or the, or the thing's broken in a meter?
No, not, not any of the cases. I'm going to be calibrated, and it's, it's already gone.
Yes, it's.
And I'm just gonna, not, not challenging what you're saying.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just talking, I'm not like saying that this is what it is by any means. I'm just throwing out theoretical of that. I just, it's puzzled me.
Are, are you aware, are you aware of a adjustment rate in the case of a homeowner having to fix their only, from, from their side of the meter? Are you aware?
Yes, now, I, well, are you talking like if you have a discrepancy in your bill that they can adjust it?
An adjustment rate, yeah.
Yes. I was told, I was told that I can't, I can't told, I was told that I can't do it because there, it hasn't been twelve months, because of the last one.
No, it's because there wasn't, because you were saying there wasn't a leak.
Oh, yeah, well.
I mean, I can't adjust it, yeah. If there's no, what my requirements are, I have a form that's filled out, and it's a document that's signed saying there was a leak.
So, what, what is the, what is the percentage of a leak adjustment?
You would pay the average plus half the leak, and then this, in this case, because it's water only and not water and sewer, then in this case, it would be the average plus half the leak, and then the city would absorb the cost of half the leak.
Have you lived there, have you lived in that house continuously for the last seven years, personally, you personally?
Probably longer. Um, me, no, personally, me, the last four. My dad's been in there every day since we bought the house, and it's almost close to maybe eight, nine years or something.
Okay. And how many times have we had high water readings? About three or four times?
Large, large ones, you know, like over, over ten thousand gallons, I'll say. There's been, I think, about four times.
Four, yeah, four.
Okay. And it seemed like two or three of them were this time of year, each time.
In a cold, during a cold spell, when, if a water line isn't close, it's too close to the surface that it could freeze and rupture? Sure. But we have a guy that says he went out and did a repair out there a couple of years ago. I don't ever recall a repair of, it wasn't a repair. My dad wanted to run a line for future out at the shop, which is about four hundred feet away from, well, almost four hundred feet to where the water line's at. He put it in, but it's never been connected. It hasn't been, there, the line, when I dug that hole trying to find the line, I did find a line running out to the shop, but it was capped and was a ring on it. So it hadn't been set to the main, it's just there. That is what I found when I personally did that a few months ago. How long ago was it? About six whole week ago.
But these other high water bills, they, in previous something was broke and repaired.
No, that, that's what I asked my dad, and he said, no. Um, he told me no, but, see, this is, this is the tough, this is the tough one, because I'm also speaking with a guy, a number one, he just had a major, major stroke, he's severely short-term memory, um, also showing, showing signs of early dementia. So, trying to talk with him about past stuff has been kind of difficult. I asked him if he has had, and he told me that no, that his housekeeper, I think her name is Rhonda, her husband Shane, who used to work, worked here, came out and helped him put that line in. But that's, he, most I know, he's changed out a couple floats in the toilet. Other than that, none. Okay.
So if, if the possibility existed that, that there was a leak that maybe you just didn't know about, or a leak that was fixed?
Prior.
That you didn't know about?
Right.
Um, with, with relations of these high water, high water bills, I'm talking about, is that possible? Is there, is there, is there, is there any possibility? Because if it was, we, you know, I would propose that we take a water adjustment, a water adjustment, and, and, and help you with this fifty-five hundred dollars. That's a lot of money.
Well, not only that, but my dad's on a fixed end, he can't afford any.
I just have one.
That's not, that's not even aside that my dad can't afford it, whether I had it or not.
So, so the answer is, the answer is, is that possible?
If there was a leak that caused the four prior?
Yes, sir.
No. No. Not, not at thirty-four thousand, forty-three thousand, no, no. You would see that. You, I'm, so you, that's a lot of water. A lot, and I understand with the ground, but it's still gonna come up and saturate you. You're going to see what's going on. Either that, or because of how my yard is and where that runs down, I know it would run down, and it would run down into my little creek, and I would hear, because I hear water every single time it rains, after it rains, I would hear water. And I've never heard anything. I personally walked down there, inspected it. I, I, I have no idea. All I know is after digging that up, there was no wet dirt, there was no sign of anything. There, I looked at the line, I looked at the, the T, I looked, I looked at every connection, and nothing, nothing. Matter of fact, when I, when I dug that open, that connection that's going down to the, the garage part, that actually had a cap over it with a half a milk jug over. So I know that it obviously hasn't been connected, because I saw it and looked at the jug, and said, oh, there's that line right there. So, I, again, this is just, it is completely baffling, and I'm, again, I'm just telling this out there. If I had a water leak, and I'm like, okay, you know what, I had a water leak, it's on me, I'll pay it, I'll have someone come out, I'll fix it. Because obviously, I don't want to keep coming down every month and having a five hundred thousand gallon water bill, so obviously, I'm gonna take care of it. But I'm here for one simple fact, that I'm not wanting, I'm here because this is, this is very disturbing to me. It's, it's, it's something, it's definitely an issue that needs to get fixed. I don't know why it's happening in the same time of the year. I don't know, I have no idea. And I am being honest to God when I sit here and say that there is, either that, or show me the raw data, other than that meter. How? I could have done it, because I don't know. And, and again, I've paid some pretty excessive water bills, I believe. Just for the simple fact of, fine, fine, because I can't have no, I can't be in a house that has no water, and especially with my, my dad. So I gotta have it, it's a necessity, but I, I've already paid eight, nine hundred dollar bills, but there's no way I can pay a five thousand, not even that. I'm not, a twenty-five hundred ain't gonna happen. It's not, and the simple fact that, is that I know that there's no leak, and to me, it's feeling, and I hate to say this, and I don't want you guys to take it wrong, it's starting to feel like I'm getting extorted from the water company. Because I, nobody can explain it to me. I can't find it. Nobody else can find it, no one else can see it. So now it's just like, now I just gotta go off of work, hey, you owe us, you owe us a thousand bucks. Oh, hey, you owe us five thousand. Wait a second. It's only me and my dad, and not only that, but, I mean, I, I take no longer than fifteen minutes to get ready and a shower and a nap. My dad, my dad's probably even less, because I gotta get him, put him into a, a, a tug chair, swing his legs in, and I just gotta spray him down, and then I shut the water up, wash him, turn it back on with a thing. That is it. That's, that's all in the laundry. That's all we got.
This board up here is the utility board, so we really, we're probably, we're not extorting.
No, I, I, I'm not saying that, please don't take me, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just saying it's like a feeling of it, like, wow, man, it's like.
But you see, you see the conundrum we're in? We have a, we have a water meter that is, is, um, doesn't fail. These water meters, you know, you heard from an engineer, someone who's worked in, in sewer and water, and you've probably heard from, from others that this water meter doesn't fail. So the, unfortunately, the burden, again, the burden is on the homeowner, and you in this case, to say, hey, I, I've got, there's some, for some reason, there's four hundred thousand gallons or whatever of water coming from, from this meter that does not, that is not meant to fail coming to my house, coming, it's coming somewhere. And that's, that's the situation we in, because how we vote, you know, determines how we interact and how fair we are with every other citizen who wants water. Because if you had told me you had a leak, if you want to change it, and you can change your mind anytime, if you say you have a leak, we can give you a rate adjustment. And I'm just trying to give you the rope, and, and, but, but if, is that your, is that your story? I, I don't want you to be honest with yourself.
I am being honest. I mean, at this, like, I came in here tonight thinking to myself, well, if, if it's gonna go any other way, I mean, I'm ready to say, hey, take me somewhere to go take a line detector test. Because I mean, I mean, I, again, I'm just, I'm stupefied on this. Now, and again, now that it's getting warmer, the only thing that I can suggest as like a homeowner, is that either I, I pay someone to come out and trench it all out, and leave that, leave that connection open. And then through the summer, I can visually sit there and watch it, and if there's a leak, obviously, with that ditch in it, the walk, the hole, where I'm being exposed, I'll see it. And then I can go, okay, well, then it was a, there was a leak, but you're talking five hundred, that's a, that's not a leak, that's a rupture. That's a rupture. That's a ruptured pipe for five hundred thousand gallons. That's, that's my point. It's a ruptured pipe. It ha, I mean, for five hundred thousand gallons in a residential, a one-inch pipe, that's a burst. I would have noticed that. I would have saw it, when I dug it up.
What was the time for it? Did it four hundred and eighty-five thousand?
It's, it was actually three hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty gallons over the course of two bills, but the second bill that it affected was probably two or three days, maybe. Like, say they read the meter on the fifteenth, and it was like from sixteenth to seventeenth, you know, until.
Y'all had someone come out and shut it off, and when I came home, I was like, why's my water off? Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I had no, I had no.
Because I, I, I recognized when I saw the bill, uh, something's wrong.
So it got back thirty-three, thirty-four days?
At the most, or at the most.
So about.
Possibly less than that. Possibly less than, that's, you know, that's just right.
And may I also add into this? If I did have a leak or a busted pipe or whatever, it's been brought to the, the water company, it's been brought to the council, right? I've made no repairs on it, y'all didn't make any repairs on it, then how can that, if it's a leak, how can it just automatically stop? And then go back to where we've been going of, our bill is an average of fifty, anywhere like fifty-six to sixty dollars a month?
It's a, it's usually a million.
Yeah. I mean, so how, after a five hundred thousand total gallons going through there, how can it now all of a sudden go? And now it's back to fifty-three? If I had a leak, wouldn't, wouldn't my bills still, with my water being on, nobody's touched it, wouldn't it still be using excessive water?
Never seen leak fix itself. I have seen a valve, I have seen a valve that went and got closed.
Yeah.
And stop the water leak.
That's really baffling. That's what I don't understand. I don't get it.
So are we sure it's not going into the well?
The well is another, the well is almost another. That, that's all clear down to the shop. That's a good question, though, and I did think of that, too. But again, where the meter's at, it's got a kind of hill, and in my shop, it sits twenty-five feet from the shop, down that big flat part where the telephone pole and shit. So I thought of that, too, but water's gonna move in the least path of resistance, so it wouldn't go there, it would go down to where that hill is, where the actual pipe goes down in my yard. I, again, trust me, I, I banged my head against, but the biggest thing is, if there was a leak, nobody's touched it, no one's fixed it, why did it all of a sudden, like you said, stop itself, and it's back to the fifty-three dollars?
And I think, I'm sorry, something else, I think where this came for me was the fact that, you know, I've just got the last year's readings, that, um, going back January, February last year, one, like I said, he's normally below two thousand gallons, and January last year was thirty thousand gallons, fall month, eleven thousand gallons, then it drops back down to eighteen hundred gallons. You know, um, like I said, there's probably been four or five times that these things have been. I think out of all of them, we've done one leak adjustment, since they've actually said, yeah, we had something go on there, and it was like a toilet or something like that, so, but, you know.
And again, and I'll be honest, I.
And it's not consistently the same month every year, but it's the same general.
During the cold period of the year. And I don't have anything that I do here, it's like steam heater, I don't have anyone.
How, how a year ago, I'm not.
No, I.
How a year ago do you not see forty thousand gallons go through? Because I would see that, you know what I'm saying? Whatever it is, to me, it is the same situation that's causing whatever, it just happened way more exponentially this time.
Yeah.
So just, just, just confirm one more time. There has, since the last leak adjustment was, was given, there's not been any leaks found, there's not been any repairs that have, that could have possibly been made, or could have occurred. There's not been any explanation as to where the water could have gone.
When you, when you asked the question, you said from the last leak adjustment, I don't remember when that was, it's been a year or two ago.
Yeah, yeah, the leak adjustment has been, because they've been paid in four.
So I can't ask, I can answer you this. Since the issue arose, and I went out and looked in my yard, dug holes, and numerous people came onto my house. And there has been, nobody touched anything. No repairs have been done. I can honestly say that. So no, nothing has been done and my bill's back to the fifty, it's under sixty dollars, under the two hundred thousand gallons.
Just to reiterate what's, what's already been said, is if there is a leak that's found, or if there is a repair that's been made to address a leak, we can, we can address that with a leak adjustment. But if there is none of that present, we've got to vote in a way that maintains a precedent that is fair and equal across all members of the utility. For, for all of those members that are consumers for the utility. So without one of those things being present, personally, I, I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of awarding a leak adjustment. Does that make sense?
Yes, no, I, yes, I get what that, yes, that makes sense.
So just confirm, there's not been any.
Another premise, because again, I'm, I'm, just let me make sure that I'm now, if I may reiterate of what your, so basically comes down to, look, Mr. Baldwin, we can help you out, and the best that we can do is give you a leak adjustment, but if you say no, you're responsible. Is that pretty much where we're at? I, I mean, maybe if you can be more layman, in layman's terms to me, just I'm.
We can't give, we can't give you, we can't give you a leak adjustment if you out here unless you tell us there was.
There was a leak, right, and then that goes against my own morals and, and values and, and me just basically saying, you're only against what I know. So I'm at, I'm at a crossroads now.
Part of the reason I'm asking if you've been present at the house all of the time, is it possible that your father could have turned on a faucet and not remembered to turn it off when you weren't present? Because if you, if you are a plumber, you can pull up some statistics and tell you how much water can run out of a three-quarter inch hose at thirty-five PSI, and it doesn't take very long to go through five hundred thousand gallons.
I can honestly say, since I have physically been here for the last four years, no. Before that, it's possible, I mean, anything's possible, I mean. But he.
I'm just.
No, I, then I would agree that it's possible.
The period that we're talking about, could you, was you present in?
With this, with, what was I talking about, right here, right now? Yes, I was present.
November, December.
Yeah. Yeah. Because like I said, me and my dad, I know exactly what we did, we actually went grocery shopping at Walmart and came home and won. And I'm the one that called. So I think, so I guess really what it comes down to is that, or if I may, could I get, could I get an ex, I don't know if we have to vote on it tonight, or can I get an extension for the first Thursday or whatever to come back? Because A number one, I have to discuss my dad, and then when you're sitting here saying an adjustment, what are we talking? Because I mean, I gotta basically be able to go back to my dad and go, look, this is what they said at the meeting, this is what they're willing to do. And if we do say that we had a leak, this is what we're gonna get charged, so we're going to have to start majorly budgeting to start paying this off, because I can honestly tell you guys this, there's no way that it can ever be paid in full, not, not like, oh, my dad's fixing income.
Mr. Baldwin, the item, the item's on the agenda tonight to vote on. Unless, unless, unless someone doesn't entertain a motion, it's gonna be voted.
Can I?
We, we, we have, we have had two different work studies to discuss this. I know you couldn't make it to the one, you made it to the first one. We even postponed this from the last, last month's record call meeting in order to give you more time to explain the situation. And, and tonight we're throwing away the Robert's Rules of Orders.
And I appreciate.
To, to allow you to speak to it.
And I do appreciate.
I don't know how much more we can talk about the situation.
I.
I mean, I'm trying to.
Well, then I guess what does it come down to if I say yes?
It's up to you.
Well, that might be up, isn't it, isn't it fair for me to ask, okay, well, if you guys, if I say yes, there was a leak and we can do an adjustment, what is gonna be, what's gonna be my, what do I have to pay after that adjustment is what I'm asking?
We can work out something. If that's what we vote on. You have to vote on that, too.
Right, yeah, right.
But, but, but you're telling us over and over again that there was no leak. I, I don't want you to lie now.
I, I don't, that's what I'm having such an issue with.
I'm having a hard time with that, because I don't want to get into that realm.
And that's, I guess that's where I'm at. I mean, honestly, it's like, I know, I know what it is and I know that we didn't, so I don't want to say that we did, but then I can't also afford not to have water at the house and then owe fifty-five hundred dollars on top of that, and, and then it's like, it's, it's just one of those things, it's like, man, then should I, or? That's a tough one for me because I, I don't.
It's tough for us.
I don't know, man, I don't.
We have to be fair to every citizen in this room.
I, I don't.
And I will say this. Unfortunately, all that we have to work with is what, is obviously what you've discussed with us, but obviously what we have to work with, actually. And unfortunately, you know, I don't feel like, as far as evidence, that we don't have, we don't have the evidence to think that anything was repaired or done. I mean, everything that we know logically points to something had to have leaked somewhere. I'm not speaking for anyone up here, but I think that we agree that that water was probably not intentionally used. I think that at the end of the day, the city's responsibility ends at the meter. And we have to do that in order to, because there are, there are other situations since I've been here that are not to the gravity that you've experienced, but are certainly the exact same situation. Where if we do something with this situation and then someone else comes along, that, there is also a monetary precedent that we will set. Where if we say that we do one thing with your bill and then someone else comes along with a lesser, you know, we have to.
Fair, just unfair, I get.
Well, and not only that, we, we've got to, we've got to roll with the policy that we set forth, or it doesn't really.
Or there's nothing.
No, I, I, I understand where you guys are at. And I get it, and I appreciate you. I, I do, but. So I, I just, I don't know, then I guess what I need to do is, A number one, I, I mean, I'm just getting kinda nervous about my dad. I want this absolutely a thousand percent on the record, in that camera, on TV. I'm telling you guys right now, I do not feel comfortable saying that there was a leak. But at this point, I'm gonna say that there was, I'm gonna say that there was then because I, I, I don't, I don't know what else to do, and I, I cannot get hit with a fifty-five. And I know that it, I know that there wasn't, I just, not at that amount. I could see.
How many bathrooms are in the house?
Two.
Is there one that's not used very often?
Um, no, not really, I mean, I use mine and then.
Well, I was thinking the possibility that a flapper had gotten hung open, and then when they went out and turned the water off itself, that it could have stopped the flow, which could have caused it to shut back.
They get used pretty, pretty, no, and I, that's, no, I get what you're, no, they get used, yeah, no, they're used pretty regularly.
Logan, can I have Logan's speaker?
Yeah, I want, I feel somewhat invested in this at this point.
I apologize, I think enough everybody's time, I'm gonna do, I just don't want to rectify.
I think that there may be a way to frame this that doesn't leave you with feeling like you are lying to say there was a leak. But I, I think there maybe is more of a possibility that there was a leak than you might realize. With the way that the soil is around here, it is possible, the gallons you said over thirty-four days would be some, down to per day, down to per hour, down to a minute, seven or eight gallons a minute. Which is not a rupture, and I'm not calling you back on that, but I, I think it's very possible that it was a slow leak over that time. And considering.
How would it fix itself? How would it not be leaking and back down to not even two thousand gallons?
That'd all answer for. But I, I think as far as the options here, and what I'm hearing, the board guys are willing to take helpful in, I, I think there's a way that you can not go against your conscience of saying, because I believe you personally, that you have not seen a leak, but I think it may be possible for you to, to take the adjusted rate under the premise that it is possible that there was a leak. To me, of all the alternatives, I think you have a very logical premise, the way that you lined up. I mean, we checked this line, we checked this line, it led to the meter, the meter was unchecked, and that seems to be accurate, which leaves really the only thing, I don't know, that it must be your leak. And that is the better alternative for you in this case.
No, and I get that, and that's what I'm trying to mull is that, again, I'm not saying that there, I'm not gonna sit here and say a thousand percent there was no leak. Yeah, could there be, could there have been a leak? Absolutely. Do, now, when I say that, I have a thousand percent sure that there was no leak inside the house. Not, I will guarantee that one.
I would be, I would be more suspicious than somewhere, whether it was an outside spigot, there was something that was open. A valve, a valve or a faucet was open that went unknown.
Right. Then I, I get, I. Sure, there was a leak. That's where I'm at.
Is there an acceptable, I ask, as a, it is possible that there was a leak, is that?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just go right here because you can't ask me that because then it's gonna make me change my mind.
I can't say.
With my real answer and what I know.
Right, I can't say that there was a leak, but I would say that there had to be a valve or a faucet somewhere that was open.
That, that would go in terms of to explain.
If we can word it even as saying whatever caused the extensive money usage has been remedied.
Which is obvious is because the, the water meter isn't spinning out of control.
The flapper, oh, pulling, been open. That makes more sense, I've had that happen in my house.
That wasn't my idea, I just wanted to bring that back up.
I mean, I have personally had it happen, but I've had it happen where when you stop having water come to it, well, I'm there, it's gonna close down because there's nothing holding it open at that point. Or maybe something where the chain got hooked up under it.
But you would hear it.
Okay. All right, I, I think.
Well, I know, I, I just know my.
I think we spend enough time on this, and if the council's ready, I want to entertain a motion to resolve this issue today.
Do we need to bring state? Robert Shaw's award?
Yeah.
I entertain a motion that we allow Mr. Baldwin to take an adjusted water leak rate in the amount of, to adjust the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars, fifty-five, five thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars from the period of time that's in question.
How much is that?
You were second there.
I was second.
Second. Our motion's been made to give Mr. Baldwin a leak adjustment on the fifty-five hundred seventy-seven dollars, and it's probably second. Is there any more discussion about this?
Discussed for three.
I think so, too, and.
I think we just call for the vote.
Okay. Let's kill it.
Brown.
Yes.
Coward.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yeah. Orders.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
May I ask how long, ob, obviously we're gonna give him an extended period of time to pay it down. It's gonna take off about three thousand dollars. And then I'm gonna remove any late fees that have accumulated from the time of the leak. So.
So if you take that and spread that over a twelve-month period, what does that do?
So it's gonna be about three thousand dollars over twelve months.
Well, if it's, if it's minimum plus half, half of fifty-five seventy-seven would only be twenty-two and some change. Plus the fifty-three dollars.
It's gonna take off about a hundred ninety thousand gallons, which is about three thousand dollars that is gonna take off. I can, I can totally map it here, I'll have to do it in the computer with it. And like I said, it will be taking off five, you know, five hundred and something dollars in late fees. Because I told him, you know, we would, I said that back at the beginning, anytime we're disputing anything with late fees, you know.
I was like, I think if it's fair, and I'm not speaking to anybody else, I think I trust the mayor and the, and the office to work that out.
Yeah.
I would agree.
All right, let's move on. All right, we got the change orders that Logan sent in for the new sewer plant. And have y'all looked over the change orders? The suspended roof was building.
I was about to say, since we are entertaining that, if it's all right, can we get the, the short of it again?
Logan, would you mind coming up and give us the very short of it?
Talking about water already.
That's good. Thank you.
This is a different color water.
We're a tough crowd tonight, Logan, so.
It's a tough situation.
But thank you, by the way, for your interjection that was required.
I've been there, it is.
Way in whether or not to bring my hand out. So, three change orders that the contractor, who was one, has submitted. First, that I believe is, I can not have any discussion, or at least questions, the deducts. So as we're getting close to the contractor installing a few area drains for stormwater, it became clear that it's not necessary to have drains. And so those were removed, that's saving a little more than seven thousand. That's what the contractor needed to create it back there. Are there any questions about that one? I've looked at this and the rest of these closely. I believe you guys have seen an original draft of these at the work study session with markups. Those were initially given to let you guys see something. And in the meantime, the contractor, I asked to adjust several things that I was not comfortable with approving. We can definitely come back to the deducts, but at the moment, I'm not hearing any questions about this. The second is for changing the gravel drive and parking area, access drive to paved, asphalt paved. And so this is something you guys have been doing previously. Fortunately, I'm thankful to say is, is about what we estimated, so about two hundred fifty thousand is originally what you guys voted on. A budget change order amount was two hundred fifty thousand, and it is roughly that. So two hundred fifty-five thousand is, once we redesign the plant area, access drive, the parking route, asphalt, we give the drawings to the contractor to price out, and he gave us to. We gave the drawings to the contractor to price out and he gave those to several different paving companies. Several of which here and I got with the contractor to try to get as many bids as possible. And this is the number they wrapped up. So initially, the contractor was asking for a number of days, I don't recall exactly how many days they were asking for. They were asking for additional days to do the work. My response to him about that was that this work should be able to be done while the old plant is being decommissioned. So there shouldn't be any additional days in the contract. So he's removed that out. As well as, um, there's a portion of this called extended overhead that was an amount, it was not an insignificant amount. But I asked that he remove the extended overhead because what that allows, that covers his, his overhead, his staff takes, his overhead cost. While he has assigned for extra days. And there are no additional days, so. Just linger a little bit longer on this one because it is a higher dollar amount, but considering this is.
Since, yeah, since he's subcontracting with that out, what are his tools and equipment? That we're being charged six thousand dollars for. That seems. Seems a little kinda crazy because it's contracted out to Rogers Group to do the work. Why are we being charged for his tools and, and equipment?
So there is some grading associated with the revision of the layout of the, I can't answer that either. It's a separate question. So the subcontractor, his tools are listed out. But the drive coming into the plant was a certain width initially. That was widened. And the layout of the parking area was widened and it has upgraded for print and there's grading that's associated with that. So there's, there is some self-form work that he's doing. That's a good question.
And the reason those changes were made to widen the road and to increase the space in the parking lot was because of fire access, right?
Somewhat, it was to, it was designed to be compatible for a fire truck, as a large truck.
Mark's bad, gotta be able to get.
Get fire engine in there.
That's not the only reason it brings up for that, but we're gonna make sure that it was, we asked, you guys, what was the large truck gonna give in there?
Right.
Well, he comes saying this after somebody else, like Scotty, heard it, so he doesn't do that though. I would talk to him first.
I believe he did. I believe he said, he worked, he worked this week, but he said this to me. Like last week or Monday or Tuesday or three, that he had not heard back, there was one he had not heard back from. And then if he did hear that it was a lower quote, then he would go with that quote and this would come down. But at the moment, this is the lowest price he's got. I'm not familiar with Rogers, are you guys familiar with?
He like Johnson paid for us in the past and they do a good job. We, uh. They quoted us paving back in the fall. And they was hired and simple than the ones that we currently in, that, that give us a bid. So they, a little higher than some of the others.
Who were the low, contractors, just curious?
Um, wasn't Scotty?
Scotty's.
Scotty's, Scotty's was the lower. They were the ones that, that came in about, was it a hundred thousand less on what we had asked them to bid?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it may have been some, a little over a hundred thousand less, but they were significantly less than the others.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that he's gotten a number from Scotty's on this one, I think he reached out to all of us. We gave him contact for a little bit. Consider the check or not.
So I guess my question, you know, is the direction for this at the moment to approve the change order and the money side of it after? Or are we approving it as it is and if we have to change it, we have to change it?
I thought I understood, we'd already voted on these change orders.
We, we, uh, we voted on these change orders, right? And, uh. Some of them have been revised.
Lord. That's right. So you, you only saw these last at the works today session, is my understanding, I wasn't here, but I think that was with the markups. The paving, you saw a budget change order and then went through creating drawings for their adjusting those and then contractor did his pricing.
So. If we were able. To get this paved. At a more affordable price. Not going through you guys to have it done. If we were to take that on after the fact. One, it wouldn't be able to go into the role, it wouldn't be able to be rolled into the revolving loan fund. Uh, the loan that we've, we've, currently it's coming out of.
Um. So you have to vote it for.
But would we be able to do that? Would we be able to basically, I guess.
Subcontract?
Walk back this, this, uh, this change order or like Doug had mentioned, subcontract this out as the city from you guys? To, to, in order to try and get a more affordable price?
Yeah, so you guys have, have paid for the design.
Cause you've done all the engineering that would pertain to this, right?
That's right. I don't see any reason why you couldn't postpone this to after the market, except that it would be in the, in the funds. And I, I don't know that it would guarantee it being a lower price, but there's different factors in that.
And I don't even, I know where you're going.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if he'd want to take that kind of project over.
Right, and that's the only reason I asked the question, just purely informational.
Yeah, and.
Well, and the other aspect of it too, and it may not matter, but so if we don't pave it, then I, I would imagine we still are gonna gravel it and then turn around.
We'll be out of compliance if we don't pave it.
Right.
Right, so that's kinda where, yeah.
How did this get missed in the original design?
That's a good question.
A question that I'm trying to come up with.
That's a long time.
There's a, there's, there's quite a few things that come across.
I mean, I had engineered a company to protect us on this, right?
Yes.
Well, and.
Yeah.
And to be fair, if I'm not mistaken, I, I know that there's a lot of things that change on y'all's end and.
Our end.
Our end, and I think it overall together has, has made this very, um.
Nightmareish.
Yeah.
But to your point, just like if I'm engineering a project for my wastewater plant, a new wastewater plant, getting rid of the old one. I think I would have found where my force mains are before I designed a project.
I guess what I'm getting at now, the, when the people that this project started with is completely different, their end and our end.
Yeah, we, we. Look we've got here now. Well, and I, I, I understand that, but it's still.
It's a valid question.
It's, it's still a question, and how, and how do you miss something that major?
That is a valid question, but Jewel Logan is.
No, I'm not, I'm just asking.
That's not Logan's fault.
Well, we, well, we look tender right now.
We'll toughen you up, don't worry.
Yeah, it, it is a valid question and it's something that we have discussed. It feels much like the conversation we had prior that we don't have much information about why it was designed with this. Frankly, I, I don't have information about why it was not designed painted. It is our job as an engineer to design things to code. And so I stand behind that fully. There are times where we are directed to, for budget reasons, design things a certain way and.
That may have happened, I don't know.
Right, and, and the same with fence, I mean, that's, federal government requires that.
After somehow got, it got left off the plan, it wasn't, wasn't looked at and thought about.
After nine eleven, that, that was just a federal requirement.
Right.
So I, that, another one, I, this, this is a question.
I wish I could get more clarity.
No, I, I.
And, and frankly, that is, I feel a bit weird near the time where we talk, we have less things to talk about that I have so little information to give you. The, the things we're talking about.
My opinion on the paving, I think we go ahead and let them pave it.
Just roll it in.
And roll it into the revolving loan fund, cause if we don't do that, then we're taking away from our street paving.
Yeah.
But I would like to see if he did turn something into Scotty's and, and see if Scotty could bid it.
Yeah, I'll check it out. I support that decision, I think that is.
I guess we just asked that you try to get it done at the best rate we can get it done.
Absolutely. It's a most reasonable request.
So we going through all of them?
So we, so we talk about force main tire and that may be as we're talking about. So. This. This, I think was discussed already, we approved, um.
Permit across the creek.
Yeah, the acquired resource impact permit, so a wrap permit. So earlier this year, the contractor, as he was preparing to, to tie into the force main or getting here to doing that. And he went to locate, actually with, with y'all's help, um, to locate force main. It was found on the opposite side of the creek than what it's found to be, or what it was expected in the design. It's my understanding, this is, I just wanna clarify this because I think it's gonna be a question, is why was it designed to be on that side of the creek instead of the other? And it's my understanding that the design, with the existing force mains and any of your collection system, was based on drawings that were given to us. And that is not unprecedented, that record drawings, especially that age would be critical. It's unfortunate and these are things that frankly, if we, if we were starting a new waste water plant, I would say we need to locate those force mains. Even if they are shown on the record drawings a certain place. The way that you minimize risk in projects like this, of this magnitude of dollar amount is to go discover your unknowns as soon as possible. And fortunately, because we're close to the project, there are less and less unknowns that you can run into additional cost. But in this case, this qualifies as a change of conditions. Because contractor found, he, he bid his project based on the L M B L D side of the west. And so he's got to have additional cost and time to get across the creek and tunnel there. I'd say it's as simple as that, there are the questions, we can talk through.
But even after they found out that the line was over on the other side of the creek, they still stuck to that May first completion date, didn't they?
That's right.
That's what we've been, what we've been told.
Yeah.
Until he.
Until this point, I would imagine. Yeah, until he found that his lead times for the materials to get those.
Well, I'm not, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna recommend, uh, extension on time because he should have ordered those valves when you ordered that pipe.
So he submitted for over fifty days and I told him that I couldn't stand behind nearly that many. I told him that I would entertain the, the amount of thirty days considering when, um. I, I just want help with perspective here, I, um. It's, it's not a way to blame, but I, I think that he could say, the contractor could say, the city could have located that line for him earlier than it was found.
It is responsibility. Did the city like not, not help locate the line when it was found?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Which is y'all's responsibility, it's your utilities to look in. Um, I know of at least. I'm recalling a month or two, if not more, that the contractor was asking for it to be located and it got located. And it's because you guys have a lot on your mind.
Let me give some of these here, they might not know what we're talking about, Mr. Staples, he knows what we're talking about. Uh, so the contractor ordered the pipe to go across the, uh. For project to be looked up. And, uh, there's some expensive valves that, uh, that are gonna be put in place here. He did not order them at the time until we approved this change order. So now he's found out, we found out, uh, first of the month, there's an eighth week delay in these valves. So my question to him that night, or that day was, you know, we can't turn this machine on until those valves are in place. Why not go and order them? Cause we, we're not gonna refuse to, to, uh, deny the change order, cause we know the plant can't be turned on. It just didn't make sense to me.
It didn't make any sense to me. I mean, how are you able, you as a contractor, how are you able to complete a project if you don't have the special materials to do so? So it's your job to locate and procure those materials.
Well, he took a chance on ordering the pipe.
Right, if he's, if he's gonna go ahead and do that, why not order the valves as well?
Right, that's my question to him.
Okay, so they're asking for additional funds because they're gonna be on site longer. They aren't gonna be on site any longer because they aren't close to being ready for startup, period. They're, they're not close to being ready for startup on a May first, if the pipes, if we pumped it across, they wouldn't be ready to start that plant up. Not gonna be ready properly till July. So any, any additional time is, is, that's on them because they're already way behind schedule.
Now, these change orders we were voting on here tonight, it, they're not asking for additional times in these change orders here, right? They're not.
They are on the force main. Yeah, initially they were asking for, for over fifty days, um.
And we need to vote on each one of these individually, correct?
Uh, yes.
So that's labor and supervision, is that the force, is that to, to get the force main in, in place? Is that what that is, the top strip?
Yeah.
That fourteen thousand.
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at the, uh, the one from, from you looking, I think, the second page of.
It's probably this.
The, in my, in the bar, it's, it's fourteen thousand, eight hundred, right? Labor supervision.
Okay, you got that.
That's right.
Yeah, but that's, that's labor and supervision, guys.
This is labor only.
So the majority, and I, I understand, Mr. Staples, your, your comment of extended time, the majority of this cost and this is material.
I think, I understand delays, I understand that, I understand the weather. And I understand. That they're probably not moving as quickly as possible as they could. I know there's a pile of dirt out there that's not been moved, it, it should have never been moved. I think it comes to a point that they're gonna, we're gonna stick to our guns and they're gonna start paying us in fees for not, not meeting the contract. I think we're about to get to that point.
I think we're at that point. I don't think it's unreasonable to, um. Debate or push back against the number of days they've asked for. I, I think it is probably more to them, they get some days because of the change of conditions. That there was their initial cost and their schedules based on where the force main was supposed to be.
How much time would it take them additionally to do the work that was, that, as it's different from? I don't care about the lead time because he should have ordered the pipe, or the valves and the pipe. I don't care about the lead time, because he should have ordered the pipe, or the valves and the pipe, all that stuff, whenever it was found, but how much additional boots on the ground time is it gonna take for him to complete? What additional work is needed?
I don't think more than several days.
Maybe five days?
Maybe a week to cross a trench across the, I, I think the majority of the reason he's asking for days is with lead time, materials. And he has not mentioned this, and I'm not saying that we bring it up, but I have that concern that he may ask why the force main wasn't located earlier. And I'll bring that up so you can anticipate how to respond to that.
Well, I might ask you, why didn't you look for it earlier?
And that would be my question as well.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be wrong to debate, I think he may have, I'd like to stand on, and it could be that, it could be approved partially with some days, recognizing the change of condition, but not entirely.
Well, I would recommend this, I'd be good with extending it ten days, and when we get to the, when we get to that point, he's not done, then he, he needs to give us a good, good reason why, that he needs four days.
So what, what, what? Last I heard was it was supposed to have been completed May first, it was projected to be, had to have been completed May first. Obviously, we're not there. What additional days, what date does that carry us to? If we award ten, ten additional days, what date does that carry us to being the completion date?
When I, when I was out there before our contractors meeting, what, a week ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, I was out there and I talked to this, the foreman, and he said, we're looking at at least July first before startup. He said, to be, to be very honest, we aren't gonna be ready to start up until July first.
Was that, was that W N O's foreman?
Uh huh.
Was that Mike?
No, no. That was W N O's foreman.
Paul.
So.
So we've been here in May the first up until now.
Right now, they're saying they're gonna be ready to start up the blowers on May first. Dry start, no liquid in the plant, just dry start.
Right, which I've, last week spoke with the S P R manufacturer, and that is what the schedule is, this trust are up there. May first has been discussed because that's been the contract date, and it stays the contract date, plus any days that are per year. Was becoming clear, and it's, it's probably about a month ago, maybe that I shared with you, Mr. Bradley, about my concern for them not being scheduled. Which is not an exciting conversation to talk about liquidated damages, I think that's probably a conversation to have with Mr. Bradley about how to approach that. My experience with liquidated damages, is you don't get as much out of liquidated damages as you may have because of fees that make up for that. But that's probably a discussion.
We think we can pass this, pass this tonight, extend it thirty days, and that would.
Carry us to June first?
Carry us to June first, and then we can get with the contractor foreman, July first, right?
He's not asking for July first, but he, it sounds like, as far as actual, there is scheduled in contract as one day, and that's currently first, and then extended by however much, and then there's actual.
These, uh, these days that we're approving, are those calendar days or are they business days?
Those are calendar days.
Curious, I didn't know if we were going on five days per week, or if we were doing all seven.
But it sounds like they need to be working seven days, seven days a drive, whatever.
I'd like to know if we're doing twenty-four seven.
You asked, I think you asked this question, Mr. Mayor, if we could pass this, the thirty day extension. And I, my answer is, I don't know that we have a choice, I mean, I mean, we do have a choice, we can continue to try to revise and try to, try to figure out ways to cut and stop creating the hole that we're in. But at the end of the day, we're, we're, I think the inevitable is still gonna occur, that we're gonna have uncompletion, an uncompleted multi-million dollar project. That, I'm just gonna, I don't, I'm just gonna say this, that, that is something, I just, I'm ready, I'm ready for this project to be behind us. Well, because of, because of all the things that we've, we've had come, come across, that all of a sudden, we're not in, in the original plans. And I think, I think that's our biggest frustration, is that it's not in the original plan. But here they are, and now we have regulations, a fence, like, you know, like you said, has to be, has to be part of the, the package now, to, to complete the deal and to seal the, the deal, and us, us to walk away knowing we finally completed one of the biggest projects that Westmoreland's ever had.
Well, and so.
That's his one, isn't it?
I don't, I, I know, how do you stop it? How do you stop her sleep?
From their perspective, what is the precedent though? If for some reason we push back, and we don't give them the days that they want, and, you know, we inevitably get to the point where that they're not done, they're supposed to be done. You know, the other aspect of this is that we can, we could inadvertently create a situation where we're keeping it from happening as well.
Right, right, no, I, if, if we, we, we need to get the project done, but we also need to hold them accountable for.
That's kind of where I'm getting at.
Their lack of action, too.
Well, the way I understand, if we extended another thirty days, and then that thirty days, we're gonna stick to our guns, they still got to keep on working. They've got to complete the plant, that's right, they can't just walk off.
That's right.
So we already extended it six months, because it was supposed to have been completed October first. I mean, in all reality, we've extended it six months, seven months.
For valve reason.
You're right, I'm right.
But, but to a point, we've extended it seven months from the initial completion date that they set forth to us. How many more times do we need to keep kicking this can down the road? I mean.
Which one's got them in thirty, thirty days?
What's, what's an acceptable amount of days to, to tell them, that, look, we, we've set a firm line, we're, we're not willing to pay you any more for your, your inaction. I mean. If it's gonna take them a week to do, to cross that creek, I say we give them a week, if that's what, if that's where the source of this, this additional days is coming from. I, I'm not willing to pay them anything more than what additional work they're actually gonna have to do.
As I say, their days on site for this work that, that they're doing, that, like I say, the extra week to cross the creek, but other than that, they're, they're gonna be on site regardless because they aren't close to being ready to go anyway.
So when was the, when was the valves ordered? Like what?
Oh, they haven't been ordered.
They have been ordered.
They have been ordered.
I saw you talking about earlier about the eight week lead times, I'm just trying to.
Well, I think Aaron said that they were available in bowling ring, I don't know if they found that or not, but.
It's my understanding that.
He told me he found the valves.
Yeah. It's my understanding those turned out to not be, um, meet spec.
A I S spec?
Yeah, A I S.
A I S.
Yep. The, the three things, I mean, I don't think it's wrong to say, it would only take a week to cross a creek. Just remembering the pieces of lead time is, that's the reason that the seven months was extended, was purely on lead time for materials.
And that's kind of where I'm getting at, so right now, they're saying they can't get the job done for two more months because, like, we're in the, we're in the electrical panel situation again. Where there's, there's a, an obviously detrimental piece of equipment that's not there.
But here's my thing, so I, I, I lived through COVID too, I experienced all the extended lead times. I experienced going through, trying to order stuff and, and having to plan ahead to order stuff because, to get it by a certain deadline, because it's common knowledge that the lead times are extended. He's already had the, the schedule extended seven months due to lead times. If I come across that, I'm probably gonna start looking to things I have to purchase later on down the road, or order later on down the road, to say, hey, what's my lead time on this? Hey, maybe I need to go ahead and plan ahead for this, so that way I can have it here by the time that I'm supposed to have it here. I mean, I, I bought appliances because I redid a kitchen throughout, while, while the pandemic was going on. I found out that appliances were a four month lead time, you know what I did? Four months before work was supposed to start in my kitchen, I went and bought appliances. I planned ahead for that.
I hear you, it's, it's when.
So I, I, I'm, I'm to the point where I'm not willing to listen to lead time being a reason for him to ask for an extraordinary amount of days to do five days worth of work.
Your own challenges when you uncover something in a time that it should have been sort of placed, and then your lead time extends you out, I, I hear you.
But who's holding, who's holding them accountable?
About what?
It was my understanding, it was, it was, it was told to us before, that the engineer was supposed to hold them accountable, or make sure that they stuck to that schedule.
Exactly.
And the representative from G M C was on site, and that's why we had to approve a change order for additional days for G M C. Was so that they had someone here to maintain and, and stay on top of the, the contractor, to make sure that they were holding their line and, and, and doing what they were expected to be done, or expected to have done as it was laid out on the schedule, so, again, who do we need to go to and speak to personally to make sure that they hold this line? Whatever date we set, whether we approve five days, we approve thirty days or fifty days, who do we need to go talk to to ensure that this, we have a hard date? And let them know, we are not extending this any further, and if they go beyond whatever we approved here tonight, that's it.
It's on them.
That's on you.
I think we're looking at one's gotta hold them, we hired you, Logan, we hired y'all's company, you, you, G M C is working for us, not W N O, working for us.
That's right.
So whatever date we set, I think y'all have got to hold them to it.
We do, and I, um. We are on site to ensure that the work is done, whether it's on, as you guys need, and to, to make sure that they don't cut any corners. We are not, within, within our responsibilities, allowed to, to push or control or direct work. And so that's the reason that the contract is written, when you say, who's holding them to the schedule, or the contract holds them to the schedule. And any additional days that are given to them by, are your voice to bring in.
And they're, they're the ones that set the completion date at the very beginning, and I, and I understand, things happen, I understand that, but they're the ones that set the completion date. Not you, not us, they did.
And they are held to that by the contract.
And, uh.
So what would it take, I mean, obviously, you're here for a point, but what would it take for W N O to be here? To be able to have that discussion, and, and, and I'm just simply bringing this up, I don't know that it would be fruitful or that it's even productive, but.
I, I know some of y'all cannot be at the construction meetings, but W N O are at the construction meetings first of the month. And that's, that's when you, I mean, I don't know if you can get W N O to a work study, I don't know if.
Yeah, and I'm just asking the question, you know, there's a possibility that we could all be, and, and to me, it's twofold. You know, that would be a, I feel like that's a work study thing, where, you know, it could go both ways. He could be able to speak to all of us at once directly about what's going on, because I feel like at this point, it, it feels like the closer we get to this, that we need more direct answers about what's going on and why things aren't happening. Because right now, the project as a whole, it, it doesn't feel like, um, it, it feels like that these things as a whole keep coming up, and at the end of the day, I think we're the ones truly that are holding them accountable by the contract, and we're in.
We're enabling them by extending this contract, continuing to extend this contract.
Yeah, it's not without reason, any extensions that this board has approved, in my opinion, have been valid. Mayor, I, I am actually pleased to hear when you said initially, I don't think that I'm comfortable with reviewing all thirty days. I reviewed this initially to weed out anything that I knew was unreasonable, but if you're asking my opinion on this, I, I don't think, materials have been ordered, that's moving forward, I made sure that he was not going to wait for approval from this to release, I think that would have been a challenge. It seems reasonable to me, considering where they are in the schedule. I'm pleased to hear, when I say it that way, uh, then you feel the urgency of saying, and putting pressure on W N O to complete the project. And I, I think you could approve all of this, and then hold them accountable when it comes to time, when that day comes. But this may be a time to have some honest conversation about, hey, we are concerned with your progress, and we need you to know that we're gonna be here to approve the valid delays and give you the time that you're due. And if there's time in here that is due, then this board is reasonable, is gonna approve those. But we're not just gonna take thirty days and just approve it because you submitted it, we, we are going to tell you that we, we feel like ten days is, is reasonable. And I think that should be a discussion, and I don't know if it was explicitly asked, but I think you could absolutely ask that David Pine be here, extend this, push this.
Is he the lead contractor for W N O?
Well, and, and, and to that point, um, and some will correct me if I'm wrong, if they feel like that I'm speaking out of turn. I don't think that it is out of the question that maybe moving forward, if they need to request an extension, then they need to be the one to ask for it here.
I'll agree with that.
Because, and I, there's no diss towards you, G M C, but at this point, I think that they need to be accountable for the changes that are, in, in time, they need to be accountable, and they need to be able to speak directly. And I'm sure even G M C is limited in what they know about the project, as opposed to literally what they're doing on site, because they're the ones actually doing all the work.
What's, what's requested, they got two weeks to get me here.
They got two weeks to be here, everybody, it's gonna be perfect.
July fourth, six o'clock.
And, and I think we just set the precedent that going forward, that, you know, just when it specifically comes to additional times, then they need to be able to back it up.
Well. I support that.
If we're not gonna vote on this.
So do we, do we need to vote on some of this tonight, or just wait?
I'm, I'm not sure what, um, I'm not sure. What's your answer?
I have an opinion of that, I mean, my opinion would be, I'd rather, I mean, I'd like to hear what, I'd like to go ahead and just have W N O um, be here and answer to their reasons why this isn't completed, and what timeframe they think that it's gonna need to be completed, and all those other questions we can ask and address. I don't, I don't see a reason to vote on anything tonight, I mean, I don't even know how we can.
Well, I, I can, I can.
How can we make a motion to table, we talked a lot about it.
I can end, I can end the discussion part here, and call for a motion, and if nobody makes a motion, then the motion fails. It's kind of the, the, I don't fail for lack of a motion. So let's, I'm gonna call the, the discussion then, and retain a motion to approve, uh, the W T P change orders.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, um, if there is a way to approve the others and not just the force main, is that, that's, just asking a question, do you guys want to approve the, the deducts? Because there are three, there's deducts, the paving, I'm hearing that the force main is the only one that you guys would like them to speak to.
Yeah, we can do that if, if it's, if we want to do that.
I make a motion, we approve the change order for the deducts from the project, as presented by W N O.
Does that include the, the paving too?
That'd be the first, it depends on how you wanna vote it over.
That didn't include paving.
No, that's.
That was just. That was just the pot, the wastewater drainage that was.
The stormwater area drains.
Backs all water drain, yeah, sorry.
That is.
It was like eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, seven thousand.
I, I made a motion to, to approve the deductions as presented by WNO.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, proper second, to approve the change order for the deductions by WNO. This is, if anyone else would need to add to that.
For the area drains.
For the area drains. Any more discussions? I think we've probably had enough. Call, call the room, Ms. Kelly.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Horner.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
All right, motion carries on that one.
Can I ask a question on these other two?
Yeah.
Prior to, I mean, I know, rules are still suspended, but I'm just wanting to make sure. If we defer these, if a motion were made to defer these to the work study, requiring WNO's presence, would that be better than a failure for lack of motion? And that would be more what we were looking for, right?
Yeah, that probably, um, one of them's for the, one of them's for the paving and for the drainage, right?
Yeah. The tie.
Told you, we have any issues, I'd like to hear, hear WNO's on, if Scotty's come back, so.
Yeah, I think you could do it either way.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're talking about is probably going to be the best way.
Okay.
I make a motion to defer the change order pertaining to the paving, so we can hear back from outstanding bids from the remaining, uh,
Contractors.
Contractors.
And, and so you're from WNO, is that as well? Do you also want to speak to that?
Not on this one.
Yep.
Because that one, that one, I mean, we've, so that's all been asked and answered, we're, I think, right?
All right.
Aside from the bid.
Yeah.
The bids are what you want.
That was the only thing we were waiting on for the paving, was, was the remaining bid from Scotty to see if it came in.
If they're getting those.
If they're getting them, yeah.
But, but if they're here work study, we can.
We can ask them that too.
I, I second, I know that's dangling there.
Yeah, motion's been made, second, uh, to defer the change order on the paving. And I want to defer, there's no discussion, call the room. Ms. Kelly.
Jones.
Yes.
Staples.
Yes.
Horner.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. We'll have a motion on the, uh, change order on the force main.
Make a motion to defer the force main change order, um, until the May work study, at which time it's requested that WNO's presence, or representative from there is present.
I second that.
All right, motion's been made, proper second, there's no discussion on the defer, Ms. Kelly, call the room.
Staples.
Yes.
Horner.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cowherd.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. With that being said, I believe that completes our agenda. Now, your type of motion.
So moved.
So moved, motion to adjourn, it's not a debate or it's a gross. Maybe adjourned.